I have to address, the first thing I want to do is that if anyone knows anything about my town hall meetings, I do talking points. Everyone should have received a pen or something to write with. Plenty of papers that I've out here for you to make notes on. And so my talking points at this time is as follows. Public Works Project. At the March 25th City Council Meeting, the Public Works Department recommended and the City Council approved the award of the 2013-2014 Streets Improvement Project. And I just want you to know that several of the residents that live in the Century Heights location, such places like 4th Avenue, 10th Avenue, in the Lock Haven area, 110th Street, Crenshaw Boulevard, 112nd Street, 1st Avenue, 2nd Avenue, 3rd Avenue, 5th Avenue, 7th Avenue, 8th Avenue, 5th Avenue, and 101st Street, those areas that you've seen that is half gray, half black, that has all been designed to be repaid under this budget project. That way you can be aware of the currently going preparation of the streets. As you'll see that we're now building the tracks, but they will be resurfacing shortly thereafter. The City Public Works Department is moving forward with the aggressive plan to address the ongoing street sweeping issues that residents have been experiencing both within the 4th District and citywide. Currently, Public Works has a contract with National Environmental Services to provide backup street sweeping services when the sweeper is down and/or the driver is out of office. The National Environmental Services will be on the street on the same day with a matter of hours of receiving a call from the Public Works Department, and they will sweep all impacted streets within their times noted on the no pardon signage. At this time, Public Works is developing a requestable proposal to solicit bids for a contract to take over streets within operation citywide, and they anticipate having recommendations for the City Council to consider in the next eight to 10 weeks. Approximately one month ago, Red Flex Cameras at the intersection of Century Boulevard and Prairie Avenue were taking photos of persons who were illegally driving through the intersection on the green light. No vehicles passed through the intersection on that day were sighted, and the Red Flex Cameras at that intersection has officially now been turned off. If you're not aware of it, the Red Flex Cameras are no longer being utilized in the city as of January of this year. However, the lights may flash, but they're not being forced. I will also advise you, as the chief spoke with us in January at our town hall meeting, that although the Red Flex Camera lights are not being forced, if you run the red light or stop sign and a police officer present, you will get a ticket to the county. See what's up? Also, I want to acknowledge that on our District 4 Inglewood Police Officer Contact, which was Lieutenant Mark Freeze, has been reassigned, and we have a new District 4 contact person from the Inglewood Police Department. His name is Lieutenant Oscar Serrano. And Lieutenant Serrano will be available to handle all District 4 issues, including public safety, quality life issues, and block club concerns and media requests. Lieutenant Serrano can be reached by calling (310) 412-5525. On March 28th, the Inglewood Police Department did a traffic unit study for people driving under the influence or just simply a checkpoint stop. And the checkpoint was in the 4th District, northbound on Crenshaw Boulevard and 116th Street, in compliance with the Department's Office of Traffic Safety Mini Grant is where the funding came from. The checkpoint yielded three individuals driving under the influence and was arrested. One drunk in public arrest, 47 citations, and 14 vehicles inbounded. A total of 825 vehicles traveled through the checkpoint with 725 drivers streamed, and six drivers were given some fields of driving tests. A couple of police items that I want you to be made aware of. On February 7th, the police officers caught a person spraying graffiti on the wall of the building at Rogers Park. Further examination of the surrounding area revealed additional graffiti committed by the same subject, and he was arrested. On February 22nd, the police officers responded to a call at the intersection of 108th Street and Prairie. Upon arrival, an 18th Street gang member was caught spraying graffiti on several walls and was taken into custody. On March 2nd, three suspects were observed by a resident removing mail from the mailbox at Westwood, Beach, and Sentinela Avenue. The resident followed the suspect in his vehicle to Culver City, at which time the Inglewood Police Officers conducted a traffic stop and found numerous pieces of mail in different names along with money orders in the vehicle. All three suspects were arrested. On March 15th, the Inglewood Police Officer received a call of shots fired in the area of 6th Avenue and 114th Street. The witness heard gunshots coming from the adjacent property garage and saw two male suspects running from the location and upon arrival, the police contained the location. Later, one of the suspects arrived at Sentinela Hospital with multiple gunshot wounds and was then transported to UCLA and Westwood. An announcement was made to the target location, did not produce the shooter, so SWAT was provided with the assistance of Manhattan Police as well as Hawthorne PD. Later on that evening, the Red Cross was called in. The assistance to displaced residents at Morningside High was set up as a temporary shelter and relief station. The incident ended at approximately 11:00 that night. On March 20th, the police officers responded to an arson call, homicide attempt, at the 112th block of Yukon Avenue where a drawing was set on fire with the occupant's saw. A male suspect was taken into custody. On March 22nd, the police officers requested assistance by Hawthorne PD with a suicidal male subject who was hanging on the overpass at Prairie Avenue and 117th Street. Crisis negotiations was initiated by the California Highway Patrol, LA County Sheriff's, LA County Fire were on hand to assist with the closure of several ramps and off-ramps to isolate the incident. So officers were able to swan the subject and prevent him from jumping, and he was then taken into custody and transported to Harvey Jungle for evaluation. And then finally, on April 3rd, the officers responded to a shooting at the intersection of La Mole Avenue and 108th Street. Upon arrival, a male shooting victim was found lying on the sidewalk where he was pronounced dead. And then also let you know that a couple of there's going to move on to. Now for the news. The City of Inglewood's 2014 Summer Camp Program is taking signups for Inglewood residents beginning May 12th. Our summer activities include the opening of a swimming pool at Edenton Park for Memorial Day weekend on Saturday, May 24th. Youth basketball signups will begin on Tuesday, May 27th, and swimming classes for the all ages will begin on Monday, June 2nd. For additional information on these activities, I have provided the flyer so be sure you get those and make notes with you. The Spring Book Sale hosted by the Friends of Inglewood Public Library is in full swing. A variety of books, books on tape, CDs, DVDs, and VHS are available for purchase in the lobby area of the Inglewood Public Library with all proteins going toward the programs and materials for the Inglewood Public Library. For those that do not have access to Time Warner Cable, Inglewood Channel 35, you can view this as well as prior District 4 Town Hall Meetings via using link on the City of Inglewood website at www.citininglewood.org. For those of you who do not have access to or use a computer and massive DVD, each Town Hall Meeting is provided at the District 4 Police Humility Center and is available free to check out for your review with family or your block, block club. The District 4 I-Cop Center is located at 2666 Western Bureau Highway at Crenshaw and Bureau Shopping Center, and you can speak to our police liaison, Aaron Elsie, Aaron Ray Johannes, whoever you are. And you can also call him at (310) 330-5346, or you can stop by Monday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Our emergency hotline numbers, the list has recently been updated to include the emergency service numbers both for the City of Inglewood water customers and both state water company customers as well. Please pick up an updated emergency number flyer from the information table and refer to those numbers listed should you experience any water service or other disruption issues. Finally, our job opportunities email list has been in place for almost three years, and we have experienced tremendous success. Thank you for the many individuals, organizations, and churches who are taking this time to pass this information along with your members, neighbors, customers, and members. Those who have interest in being added to our jobs opportunity list can provide your name and email list on the sign up sheet outside or contact my council assistant, Mrs. Clotted Matthews, at our district office, at the Inglewood City Hall, which is (310) 412-8605. That is the highlights that I normally give on the talking points. Now, while you were here, we have a lot of presentations. And I'm talking fast because I have really moved fast with only the presenter, it's time for you to hear them over just hearing me all the time. One of the areas I had shared with you before has to do with new development of the Hollywood Park Land Company, which has 238 acres. It's now going to be facelift into new development, as well as the issues that have arisen, regarding some issues regarding when the horses are not running, the horses don't over there, and there's been some impact regarding road issues and other conservative service. So please help me welcome the Hollywood Park Tomorrow Transition Pest Management Employment Presentation, Gerard McCollum II of Hollywood Park Tomorrow. Gerard?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you again for having me. We've been doing this now for eight years, and it's finally, the day is coming, we're finally starting the transition of the racetrack. At least that we know, we started groundbreaking roughly about a month ago. Since that official groundbreaking, the track courses that are currently under decommissioning, you can see fenced off, which no longer go north on the transition from the casino over to the track site, completely fenced off. Primarily because in those areas, we are removing items that, like office equipment and items that have been sold in the auction, and basically stripping everything down to basically get them for the wrecking ball. So the demolition is taking place in about three weeks from now. And so a lot of this area, you'll start to see certain folks off as we start to move into demolition phase. And by the way, demolition is going to take about eight to nine months. And then from demolition phase, it's moving into infrastructure build-out. 238 acres, which is the size of a small city, so it's going to take us quite some time. So the total process between demolition and infrastructure build-out is going to take us somewhere between 15 to 18 months, possibly up to 21 months. And then after that part, you start to see vertical buildings start to build up. And so our hope is that we're going to schedule, and we don't have a crazy rainy season or anything else like that that normally delays our projects, so far it's been pretty dry. We would probably start to see some of the commercial buildings up and ready and operational somewhere around 2017. So that gives you an idea where the first phase of the start is start to see things pop up and actually become in use. Like Calco was saying earlier, we actually went through a very extensive process to try to mitigate the normal two-year cycle that happens for animals that live close to the track. You know, every two years when their horses leave the track, so roads have nothing to feed on, and so they sort of go out to the neighborhoods looking for things to feed on. And this has been going on since then, creating a two-year cycle. Well, anticipation of that, what we've done is that prior to track closing in December, September 22nd was the last day, we actually commissioned a whole process that started to remove straw and hay and a lot of the food earlier from the process. And also started trapping quite a bit of the roads and mites on-site, as well as we started to, as the horses were leaving, the process of which tried to rump out the farm. So as just removing just the straw and hay, we actually went deep down into the ground to remove nests and stuff like that as well. Those type of roads, whatever, we were able to trap, mitigate, and eradicate through approved methods. Other items such as, you know, those coyotes that run all over down the city, and those we have trapped, four exit coyotes legally trapped, because you can't terminate coyotes. But in the whole process, we have filed that and then sent them how to catch and release program, and which we've done. But those coyotes, all over the county, it's actually county-wide problem, not just our problem. So as we trap, they keep coming, and as they roam throughout the parks and other areas for food, you know, we still have our traps out, and still trying to mitigate the problem, but they're no longer going to be feeding on-site anymore. Additionally, the cats, the number of feral cats on-site over the years, the majority of those have also been removed. There's an organization that's led by the former horse owners that has a feline rescue society, and they've been trapping those cats. And they've caught over 47 cats thus far. They're sitting there somewhere around eight to nine, they're still roaming around, and they're still looking out to try to catch those cats as well. We've also responded to some of the calls, fly mitigation has been offered through two heat areas, heat periods where most likely we have a heavy intrusion of flies. We pretty much have not had that as much as we've had before in the past. So we feel like we've pretty much have got through the very critical areas. You know, again, the track has been closed until December 22nd. If there was going to be a big outbreak, that probably was heard about one and a half ago. And we feel like we're pretty much are on top of it. We've had inspections by the county health department, we've passed those inspections, and the county pest control was out on Wednesday as well. We didn't see the traps and everything else like that, and also they were saying they passed it as well. So that's where we're at at this point. I'd love to be able to take your questions and...
Just a couple of questions or comments, anybody? Yes, sir, please?
Last one, that was possible, and 10:9 included the problem, sorry, most of the time tearing everything down. Are they going to be trapped until you available to us, the cats or possums in the raccoon? But that little sucker tore my yard.
Yeah, you know, some of these things legally you can't trap.
And we can't trap the possums or the raccoon.
You can, but you just can't tell what you're doing. But where we can, you know, because we've also been working with, when the county health came out, you know, the issue was food. And I don't know if those that lived along those Darby, do you remember where the people were leaving food out for the cats? And it was like too much food, so then the cats and the mice and the possums were going out for food. So we tried to eradicate all of that, probably now their cats are mostly gone, we're not seeing as much. You know, people are trying to help. We kind of realize that they're not really helping, they're creating a bit of issues on the rest of the neighborhood. And so we've been removing that where we see it, it's not occurring as much as they have before in the past. The county health has also worked with our neighbors to the south of us, Target, Home Depot, and the food center there to make sure that their cans are empty on a regular basis, and also that a couple of... Right now, what they're looking for, there's little food on-site. So right now, when they're looking for any trash cans, they think of, work with the city as well to make sure Darby Park trash cans are empty on a regular basis as well. So if the food source dry out, you know, so will their opportunities as well. But a lot of the mites and stuff like that, we've really, I know we had the town hall meeting a couple few weeks ago with Councilman Dotson's district, and we responded to a combination with grass for getting it back here and pulling those areas down, put additional traps where somebody was sitting there with gully, they've been blowing in kitchen sewer lines and we have one of the traps down there as well. So any of those type of things, you know, feel free to contact us or your councilman, you know, Ms. Matthews, I think we're kind of parents now in the road debate and issues or whatever, so feel free to kind of, you know, call on that. You know, I just finally just want to say, you know, in about the next two months, our website is going to be reached, reached nine. Our website is Hollywood Park Tomorrow. We're dropping tomorrow, but tomorrow was eight years ago, and now we're today. And so, you know, the event is Hollywood Park. But what we're going to be putting on that in the next two months is a site for you to register so that you can also get construction alerts to find out what's kind of going on, if there's any litigation with street closures or when type of structure is running. So just kind of aware of what's going on. It'll also give you an opportunity to be able to, if there's issues relating to state of destruction, you can also contact us directly so that we can get the trash solved issues as well. I want to, before you speak, I want to give the draft, job opportunities. Job opportunities. So we told, with, sorry, two jobs there as, since we started construction, and also small contractor jobs there. A lot of the individuals that registered and followed through are now in three programs that we are partnering with. The Urban League's Job Outreach Program, which provides an AP training program. EB Jobs, which also provides a training program as well. And those programs, and South Bay, wait, South Bay Workforce Successive Board as well. And those programs basically have grant opportunities to get people into the training for construction-related jobs. And once they go through those jobs, they also get their applies, their apprentice program, which we are calling Atlas Apprentice Program, people who work on-site. If they're experienced people, we've got those already registered in, and those are being called on-site as their specialty, whether they're demolition specialists or laborers or whatever, on those on-site if you can, job opportunities come up. Our first big contract, well, we've got a number of small contracts that have been locally worked on, awarding all to local vendors from Kingpin City to the security department, not from the entire site. We've exceeded well over the 30% target goal that the city gave us. We have local hiring and local contractors, it's both. And we're trying to do both, because also not only the, you know, contractors are where a lot of the money is as well. So we're trying to do both in that. Our first demolition contract was started about three weeks, and in that we achieved 36% threshold as well.
All right, we'll take one more comment, we have to do a lot. Yes, sir?
Okay, building up, you said in 2017, are we talking about homes or retail stores?
Combination of both, combination of both. There's roughly about 560, 600,000 square feet of retail that's going to be built on-site. And the first phase of the project goes along Prairie Tool Car heading up towards the Forum. You'll see the housing come on right about the last quarter of 2016, and the retail probably mid-2017. Now, the retail is going to come over, come up and fade with this. Each project, so you probably see the first 300,000, first half of it up, and the building will keep going and just kind of opening and being populated by various retailers.
One final comment, can we bring the mic up to the governor here?
Oh, well, yes, we're in the Renaissance, matter of fact, we're one house out of the retaining wall. One of the problems that we've noticed is that people have cut buildings over at Darby Park and use it as an easement to walk through. One of our concerns though is as the, as those buildings are abandoned, transit's moving in, because we're starting to have a problem with burglars coming over the retaining wall into the backyard of my neighbor's place. That was a recent incident. What are you trying to do about trespassers and keeping people from coming through? Evidently, people cut through there as a quick way to get from, say, Darby Park to Prairie.
Well, actually, people cut the fence, and do a lot of things back that they shouldn't be doing. And that's actually what we're trying to coordinate with the Inglewood Police Department, because parts of those are not our property. We try to do as little as we can. We are going to build a new fence in that back area there, because there's some areas that we're going to have to coordinate with the city as well. That whole area is actually right now being, cameras are being all around the site like we sleep right now, and security patrol is in the, it's been, it's doing a lot in the back area. What's going to help us, we're also allowing, in the next three weeks as the demolition starts, you're going to see some activity back there with LA County Police, Inglewood Police, Gardena Police, and the South Bay Coalition of Police doing training exercises in the back area. So it could be a large presence back there for a period of time. And that's also going to help. But a lot of this is going to be coordination area. What we do is we'll also get our security folks in contact with the council's office as well, the city activity, the police patrol there as well. But it's just such a loophole back there where people hide, they sleep, and do a number of various things. Over the years, we have patched that fence so much in so many different times, and it's almost like it's took some guys to leave, they go back and do that. But there's a plan back there to put pretty much a very robust water fence that was agreed upon by the 10th and 11th Avenue folks. They still want to have a view, but they still want to have some protected from the folks that would kind of harbor and drop you right there. Okay? Thank you, guys.
Let's give a half more quick. We do have a very tight schedule, and before we begin, I'd start by, we have to honor and extinguish Mayor Jay T. Butt. Would you please come?
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Good business, man.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, everybody. And we have just one Town Hall Meeting over at the First Church this morning, and then after we have to go to a 100-year-old birthday celebration. So it's a busy day, but I want to take a few minutes, wanted to say how proud I am of where we've come in the last three years. We went from a city with an $18.2600 structural deficit, in danger of being cash flow bankrupt sometime in 2011, to having two years of balanced budgets. We have a deficit looming for the next year, but more importantly, we've attracted economic development back to our city. And you know the form over in January, mostly sold out the crowds. We have over 300 Inglewood residents that have jobs today that didn't have a few years ago. Our sales tax receipts have increased 17% the last two years. The average price that an Inglewood house sells for has increased 38% since 2000. We are embarking now on a residential street resurfacing program within the next 30 to 40 days. We have started to renew our water structure, which is critical. We had sewers and pipes over in excess of 60 years of age, and we had no cap to replace that program. And so the way we figured out what pipes to replace, we waited until there was a sinkhole in the roadway and spent water that was leaking for a long time. And then we said, oh, we need to fix that set of pipes. Well, now we've averaged, we're ahead of our goal. Our goal is to do 1.8 miles per year. We've averaged 2.7 miles per year over the last two years. We are going to be the home of the MTV Video Video Music Awards on August 24th. That's an internationally, international event, and it's going to be in Inglewood, California. The first time we posted any awards program of that stature. At our State of the City was held, our address was held at the Forum. We had over 500 people in attendance, and that was the largest indoor non-entertainment event in history of the city. The shuttle endeavor came through our city again in international attention. And the reason I'm saying these things is that we are developing what you can't pay for, and that's national and international critical. People are proud to live here again, and we're just starting. And that's because of the efforts of council working together without self-interest to solve problems and to do your business. I am so proud to have, I always say I was never offered a good job, and all the jobs I've had have been good jobs in my life. And it looks like I can really continue that streak right now. So, Johnson, thank you for breaking your schedule. And I want to tell you I'm proud I answered your mayor, proud for the support that you've given this council, and proud for the things that we have done, and will continue to do for you. Thank you, man.
Before I start my next thing, which is what some of you have come to see, it has to do with the retail store survey. And we have prepared a PowerPoint. And before I show you the PowerPoint, please help me extend a token of gratitude to my council assistant, Mrs. Clotted Matthews. So as we get ready to get started, this is the retail survey results. For those that were here in January at the Town Hall Meeting, I provided you a survey. I provided you a survey to say, I want to know where to shop, and I want to know if we were successful in bringing a retail store here, what store would it be? Or are you satisfied with the stores that you have? What was interesting to learn is that several people that did the survey didn't even realize the store in the mall or in business. But they also didn't realize that the stores had changed their method of operating. Instead of having a storefront, they're now online service. And also, some have opted not to come into our Inglewood area as of now. But you heard the mayor speak earlier, that you're going to change that real quick. So, this survey, I'm going to share with you, do a little disclaimer, let you know that this is not the will of the council. This is information that we received from you, those that did the survey. Also, I want to identify that I can't say it's the majority of the Inglewood residents, because obviously, when you have over forty, twenty thousand, or actually, we have almost a hundred twenty thousand in population, they have a handful, does give us a thumbnail sketch to actually what we're looking for, or what you're looking for, bringing to the community. So, our survey went all the way from January of the town hall meeting all the way to the end of February. Residents, we're telling residents, residents were telling neighbors and family, and even went beyond the boundaries of the city of Inglewood as well that that provided. As I shared with you earlier, that some of the information provided to you, individual participants didn't realize that we're located and what kind of services they currently provide. So, in summary, I want to let you know that we have at least seventy-six people between the January meeting and February, in February, we'll give cutoff of the survey. We categorized them into twenty-three different categories, and so now I'm going to give you the results. So, before I share all those in detail, there were so many different stores of choice, one item of choice with my team, that we quantified it based on the highest percentage of those stores within those categories. So, you will see only the top three or the four items. So, as the survey shows, we go from automotive supplies all the way to electronics. We go from the family fun centers all the way to the grocery markets. We go from discount stores to theaters. So, the first items of auto supplies and accessories, this is what you said you wanted. Majority of people said we want AutoZone systems in the area, we want Pep Boys, and we want Good Year. Good Year gets closed before, so we want to be able to get that back to the system. The next category is beauty. As you see, beauty, the top two are Sally Giddy and Supercuts. And that's exams, and also cosmetics. I will tell you upfront, something I have never heard of, but that's what you said you want, specifically the ladies. I was surprised, we didn't know. For the books, which is the next category, there's actually only one bookstore that is still active on Barnes &amp; Noble. The rest are either out of business or online sales. For children's section, the highlight, well, who want toys are us, and babies are us, which are the two top vendors in this particular category. For department stores, you said you wanted Kohl's and you wanted Sears to come back. And I might add, before I stop there, the presenter that just came before, Troy, he is going to get a copy of this survey. And everyone here, we have up to two hundred copies, we're going to make available for you to take with you, share with others as well. Under domestic, fabric, and crafts, Joann Fabric, Lemons and Things, Strauss, Michael's Crafts. These are the ones that you said you wanted, but I want you to know what you asked for. We're talking about how some are online only, and then you see Strauss is actually out of business. For drug stores, you said that you are satisfied with CVS, and you'd like to also have GNCs here as well. Long Drug Stores, which is now CVS. Electronics, appliances and computers, you said you want best buy. We want prime electronics, and as you can see there, some of the others that are, Sharper Image is getting its own online store. Family centers, family centers, you wanted Kohl's and that runs with Kohl's. Dave's and Buster's, Bright Child again is out of business, but then you mentioned about a couple other places as well that you have strongly expressed. Fast food restaurants, and I want to qualify for fast food, that there's three different categories, because there's so many selections of restaurants, that I took the executive privilege as I tried to categorize it, but those that are low to medium, meaning the high, and those that are high. So, for the first category, for the low to medium, you said you want Olive Garden, California Beach Kitchen, Chevalte Mexican Grill, Superlatation Collection. For the medium price to high, you want Albee, Mimi's Cafe, Green's Compliments, and the, I haven't never heard of it. For the higher end, do you feel me? So, keep in mind now, these are going to be made available to you to share with others, but I will present with the developers coming to the city saying, this is what you want. For the high end, you want PF Chang's, Elton Bar, Houston, and the Hammers, Living Steakhouse. And then also, so you know, I just met with the owner of Harold &amp; Bell, who also expresses wanting to come this way. Footwear, DSW Stores, Nike Town off Broadway, fabulous footwear. DSW Stores, also, so you know, they moved across the street, or approximately across the street at the intersection of Crenshaw and Century. They went out to call the Exxon Mobil gas station, so you know that. Why is W F? W F, warehouse. So, you're listening. You see that? I just think of the script, I, I, I. DSW stores. Let's go to furniture and home stuff. Okay, he said you wanted Homeless, Ikea, if you want, Reapport, Austin, World Market. Gas and convenience stores, you said you wanted Seven Levens, Gas, Gold Oil, Chevron, Arden. Health club and weight loss centers, we wanted for our fitness, Factory Club, LA Fitness, J and K. Home improvement and hardware, you want clothes like Home Depot, Ace, and, or. Now, grocery stores. Okay, you want Number One, Whole Foods, Christmas Time, Out and Out. So, these are all the ones you said you wanted. Then we have miscellaneous discount stores. Again, while I'm, I'm just going to say what I have here, Two Twenty Morning, Dollar Tree, Big Lots, Nine-Nine's. Two Twenty Morning, again, I haven't heard of. Office Stationery and Party City Lot, Hallmark, Party City, Kinko's. Pet stores, you said I want Petco and Dominator, Petco or Pet, Pet Mark, Pet Marks, Smart. Records and tapes and videos, all of these are online, you can go to Sporting Goods. Warehouse Power, Blockbuster, Holland's Video. Soft goods apparel, Nordstrom Rack, if you said you wanted, Stein Mart, O'Nady, Reservoir. Okay, sporting goods, Big Five, Sports Chalet, Sports Authority, Ariada. And for theaters, we've heard talked about earlier, AMC, Civic Theater, United Artists, and Vanda, which is now out of business. So, that concludes the study, and again, I want to stress, I have this survey of statistics available for you immediately after this town hall meeting. So, I ask for you to please stay, make sure you get your coffee. I will have it in place out into the foyer with Ms. Matthews. And again, I ask that you please thank Ms. Matthews for the time and effort of helping me put this PowerPoint together. Can you give a hand? We can capture the pulse of what you want. We're there, are we? So, I will be meeting with Mr. Carter McCollum and others regarding developments, particularly the one center I got a little on up front, and that's the one that's on Imperial and Crenshaw, don't ask if Crenshaw Imperial Shopping Center, or Chartered Discount. If you need to change that, now I have a list of what we can now draw from. Now, the next presenter I want to share with you has come to us before, and I think it's critical that we also talk about where are the results and where are we going. So, those that follow me through the flight path, identify, we want to make sure that you know what the status is, because sunset December of twenty fifteen is Judgment Day as to whether or not any homes, if any, will qualify and are will be completed within that timeframe. So, the mayor and council gave a stringent responsibility and assignment to our residential sound insulation department, saying we need to beef up the number of homes that we need per year in order for us to capitalize. Remember, we get as many homes on the flight path that is identified by LALA and FAA, and say these homes qualify under that, then we can start concentrating on those homes outside the corridor, again, that are identified by FAA and LALA. So, I'm proud to bring up to, to you today, our assistant city manager and our chief financial officer, who's over the residential sound insulation program, please help me welcome David Sparsen.
Thank you very much for inviting me to your town hall meeting. Again, I'm really very happy, I feel we have very good news. The last time I was here, I told you that we had accepted the challenge by the mayor and the council to complete a thousand homes from the period of March two thousand thirteen to March two thousand fourteen. And I'm happy to report now, and I remember at the time, you know, everybody, I was concerned about that commitment and goal, saying that, you know, I hope we can do it, I hope we can do it. Well, I'm happy to report today that during that period of time from March two thousand thirteen to March two thousand fourteen, the city sound insulation program completed one thousand twenty-two homes in there. And again, you know, I have to basically take my hat off to the mayor and to the council members, Mr. Franklin, for their, you know, very avid support of the operations, because we had to make a number of changes, and they were not reluctant at all to assist me and provide me with the opportunity to make those changes, get the program up and moving very aggressively. And so, I do want to make sure that, you know, there was a lot of work on the ground, but it wouldn't have happened had we not had the support of the mayor and the council, and particularly Mr. Franklin. So, again, I want to make that report. The concern that I come across when I come to these town hall meetings is not so much the number of people that are, have been, their homes have been mitigated within the quarter, it's those that are on the peripheral edge, you know, and which is commonly referred to as end of block, squared off block. And I can, you know, by this chart that I have here, you can see that those dark blue areas are the areas that we are targeting for the squared off and end of the block areas with the Federal Aviation Administration and with LALA. The, as of yet, they have been non-responsive. You know, I would say that because we've made a number of attempts to get them to look at this and start to, you know, give us the approval to move to these squared off block areas. Their concern, obviously, is that everybody inside the sound contours are, their homes are mitigated first, and then, once that determination has been made, then we, you know, they'll entertain the idea of going to the end of the block. We're asking them to be a little bit more, you know, aggressive on their part as well, because, you know, as Mr. Franklin said, that this program will start to wind down at the end of two thousand and fifteen. And so, we want to, you know, provide as much benefit to the residents of Inglewood as we possibly can. And so, we're trying to press them to look at the end of the block issue. As you can see from this particular chart in District Four, that the areas within the sound contour have pretty much been mitigated. Now, there's two contours that go over the city, one's on the south and one's on the north. And so, we are still trying to get into the other areas that, in order to get those homes completed that are in the contours, so that we have even a better argument with the LALA or the FAA to say, please give us the opportunity to spread this out to the other residents in Inglewood. So, just so that you, you know, know, we have not dropped that from our daily activities of trying to, you know, keep in contact with them. I think that we have probably contacted everybody in the FAA on the west coast or west of the Mississippi in order to get them to look at this issue, you know, on behalf of the city of Inglewood. And so, we have been constantly knocking on doors, making phone calls, and asking them to look at this. But their response has always been, what about the people on the inside? So, that is a good point on their behalf, and I have told them that actually, in the city of Inglewood, we are starting to run out of single-family homes inside the quarters. And even, you know, multiple family homes inside the quarters, we're starting to lose. And so, right now, we are aggressively pursuing those homes that have been, that have dropped out of the program some years ago, because they might have had code violations, you know, on their properties. And I say on their properties, because that is a distinction that we are making in order to move this program forward. And in the past, the, if you had a structure on your property that wasn't the house, and you had a code violation on that, that was enough to take that property out. I have worked with the mayor and council, and this is one of the areas that Mr. Franklin has been very supportive of, and getting them to allow us to separate those structures that have code violations outside of the residence, because we don't do sound insulation on the garage. We don't do it on the garden shed in the backyard, you know, we do it on the home. And so, with their understanding and blessing, we're now separating those properties so that if the code violation is on a structure other than the primary resident, that we're moving forward with the sound insulation. Now, as far as the primary residence is concerned, you know, we're trying to look a little bit more critically at whether or not the code violation is a major or a minor. If it's a minor violation, we want to move forward. If it's a major violation, we're asking the property owner, the homeowner, to work with us, get that mitigated so that we can get them back into the program. And we're making the contacts early on so that, you know, once we start to go into the design phase, they have an opportunity, you know, of a number of months to work on that code violation, get it mitigated, and then we can continue moving forward. So, the story is a good one for the city of Inglewood, and that is that we were able to achieve the council and the mayor's goal of a thousand homes this past year. We're looking to do a thousand more between this March and March of two thousand and fifteen. So, we're pushing very hard, and we want as many people as we can, those in the contours, to contact us, you know, and let's work out some of the details as to whether or not the code violations are major and minor, and then what we can do in order to get those mitigated. And then, as we start to fill out the, you know, the homes that are inside the contours, we'll get a better reception for mitigating those that are on the peripheral edges. So, I thank you very much for the invitation. I'll be around in the back if anybody has questions for me for a few minutes, because I too have to go over to Mr. Dotson's town hall meeting.
Before he leaves, let me just share something with you. We need for you to talk to your neighbors. If you are earning the flight path, here's the diagram, identifying the flight path that's been regulated and identified by Los Angeles Airport and Federal Aviation. We have mail letters to your neighbors, we have door hangers with your neighbors. We try to, all we can is say, you're honored to fly the path, but we can't get you to respond. And when you don't respond, we had this discussion in January at our town hall meeting, and if your neighbor doesn't respond, guess what? We can't do the end of the block, or the square block, until we at least reach out to those that are earning the flight path. So, when you go back to your block class, and you go to your vicinity block, you can identify what areas identify that wasn't the flight path. We need for you to talk to your neighbor and say, have you clocked? If not, why not? If you're not interested, at least call City Hall and talk to David Sparsen, his team for residential sound insulation, saying you no longer interested, so we can move on to exhaust that list, so we can now move on to the end of the block. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, let's give Mr. Sparsen a good round of applause. Okay, next, we have another good neighbor that has been with us for many, many years, and making sure that everyone stays healthy. and making sure that everyone stays healthy, services, medical service available 24 hours a day. We've been a longtime partner, since I came here, over 30 plus years. We now have a representative from Centennial Hospital, who's going to give us an update on development. Please help me recognize Anita Panar.
Good morning, Councilman. I'm excited to see this room is full of people, my goodness. This is great. I'm walking you all through a little presentation to give you an update on all of the things that we've been having on at Centennial. Have many of you driven by lately and seen a lot of the construction that's happening? We've got BOBos and great things to talk about. For those of you that may not know, Centennial has a rich history, dates back from 1924, where it used to be a 12-bed hospital. In 1948, it became Centennial Valley Community Hospital. In 1960, it was first, construction, about 60 beds. Throughout the 60s and 70s, it continued to expand, and it's now at a 360 m bed capacity. In 2007, it was purchased by Prime Healthcare Services. I am very, Centennial's very close to my heart, I was fat, and Centennial when Tenet owned it, and Centennial Freeman owned it, and I've got to tell you, Dr. Frimretty really is putting a lot of money into this facility. Next slide, please. This map shows a few care hospitals near Centennial. As you see, we are here, within a five mile radius, we have another hospital, and within a five mile, Memorial Hospital of Florida. Yolo showed the different hospitals, while this area here is at seven and a half mile radius, and this mile, this is a 10 mile radius. So as you can see, Centennial really is truly standing with servicing our community here. Ultimate range is up where I represent kinds of hospitals. Next slide, please. So the population within a five mile radius is one, 17 million residents that we service. At seven and a half miles here, it is an extra 1.3, and at 10 miles, it's an extra 1.1. So in total, we've got about 3.4 million residents within a 10 mile, 3.4 million residents within a 10 mile radius around this Centennial. We've got major state and national recognition that's going on, we've got patient safety culture that allows numerous awards, these are just different initiatives that we've been having on in the hospital to maybe get there safe for patient care. And our hospital's recognition and awards, Prime Healthcare is named for patients' 15 top health assistance again. That's a parent company. Next slide. And in the nation 100 top hospitals, we were named one of the top again. So out of those 130 hospitals, we're in California, three are teaching hospitals, 10 were community hospitals, and eight of the 10 are applied healthcare hospitals. Centennial Hospital received an A in the hospital safety score by the LEAP group. And these are again numerous medical excellence awards that Centennial has won, number one in the nation for neurological care, patient safety awards, top 100 in the nation, top 10% of the nation, number one in California for overall medical care, heart failure treatment, pulmonary care, number one in California for cardiac care, I can't get it lining up, but I know time is limited, but as you can see here, Centennial Hospital endeavors to provide comprehensive quality healthcare in the community, and we are a hospital that we honor. We are Centennial here, the hospital, here's a little video of what we did at this point. What do you have with that board? No, I can't see where it says OB. We are making major renovations also to our OB delivery unit, we are soon to have private labor and delivery suites. That construction is a little slow. Yep. This is what our new OB nursing station will look like, next slide, please. This is a labor delivery room, private suites, an entire Inglewood. Next slide, please. And that will be the OR, the OB delivery room. And then I'll show you a little slide, so you can get an idea of what Centennial Hospital will look like. Again, just yesterday, we won, I got this, I'll link with this press release out there, it's Centennial won, the OBA Business Journal, named Centennial Hospital as a recipient of the healthcare leadership award for Medical Center of the Year. This will be the hospital entrance. We're asking you all to be just there, but as patiently as you get through our construction in the hospital. Across the street, Club Six. This will be the admitting department. We actually are currently retrofitted, scientifically retrofitted in the hospital right now, so that also adds to a little bit of amazing for the government. More busy. And you know, right now, many hospitals are trying to push back their seismic retrofitting, Dr. Frimretty's actually one of the few hospitals that have invested down online to bring it And the emergency room entrance is coming up shortly. Our art and text created this little video for you. And this will be the parking, there's somebody who are parking on the dock of the hospital. And that show, this is pretty much what it will look like, does anyone have any questions?
Uh, we can put the mic.
I'll try my best to answer them. Otherwise, I'll give you my email, and you can send me an email, and I'll find the answer for you.
Is Centennial a trauma center? And if not, what is the closest trauma center to our community?
Centennial is a kid care hospital, the closest that we have is MLK, the 105.
Could you tell us the significance of a trauma center over a kid care?
Well, trauma centers are definitely, I mean, we could deal, we can stabilize patients, but trauma is definitely where you've got a big team that's dedicated to like bullet shot wounds, major, very traumatic events like that, the other one would be us, the drugstore hospital.
Any other questions where, what's at the hospital? Saying, let's give our hand to you, would you please? Okay, moving right along in the interest of time, now it's time to have some fun. If anything knows, if anybody knows me, you know I like kids. Being a scout leader for many years since 1994, watched my son go from a Cub Scout to Eagle Scout, and proud to say, we'll get him to master at USC in social studies, maybe 16 in this school. My first Eagle Scout was from Minnifew, belonged to my son, but my first Eagle Scout is Dominic Fuller, and he was actually from a single parent, head of household, and the teachers back in those days, Nancy Shinaka goes up in the book, they said, what are you doing to this boy, because he's simply been over and now following your leadership. Proud to say, he has now got his first Brooks degree at UCLA, and is practicing law. So the thing is right now, we as parents, community residents, say that we want to make change. In order for us to make change, we have to have a working environment, and the environment on campuses that will entice and motivate kids, that this is a quality learning environment. And also to make sure that the teachers that are there, that they have the necessary education and the compassion to be able to help our youth get the knowledge that is needed for them to be able to compete in the major sport. I'm proud to say that our next presenter is the executive director, or I should say the assistant state superintendent of the Inglewood Unified School District, Dr. Stephen McCray. Please join us. And we did see you helping with the timing.
Did you remember I was in great USC? My daughter, Jordi, your son over there, she's been answering the question, she's going to be a Trojan, so fight him. Well, I'd like to welcome everyone here to this town hall meeting, extend my appreciation for the opportunity to present to District Four. My name is Stephen McCray, I'm the executive director of New Community Relations here in the Inglewood Unified School District, and I want to thank Councilman Franklin for the invitation to present here today and bring all of District Four up to date on where we're at in the Inglewood Unified School District. I represent State Trustee Dr. Don Brandt and the team that joined with the Inglewood Unified School District to help us move forward, to deal with some of the problems that we've had in the past, and then to move forward so we can attain the goals and the mission that we have in our district city of Inglewood. We came in in July of this year, we faced some issues of mediacy, and we had an issue of fiscal solvency that's fifty-fourth, which is what led to the, to go into state receivership with multi-million dollar structural deficit that triggered the need for a $55 million loan from the state of California. So we had an issue of declining enrollment, 18,000 students four years ago, down to 12,000 students. So we had some issues of mediacy that includes fiscal solvency, we had to begin restoring essential systems and services, and we really had to improve the volume of education and communication and the support that our good people have. And I want to reiterate that there are wonderful people working in Inglewood, there are wonderful people in the school district, there are very, very competent people in the school district. So it was really a good challenge and an important challenge for us to sort of fix some of the systems that have broken down, so these people can, so our educators here and our families in the community can give the support that they need. Our vision and our mission, very simply, we're a student-centered district, and our vision is 21st century college and career readiness and readiness with full citizenship for our children and our families in the 21st century. To do that, our mission had to include some very specific goals. One was safety, safety is a high priority, the second is academic excellence, the third is fiscal solvency, and the fourth is community engagement. And changes are on the way. As Dr. Martin Luther King said, when we talk of character, character is revealed and developed in times of adversity. So we face this adversity as a district, and we face it with a full commitment to excellence. We, first of all, we recognize that people and partnerships are our greatest assets. We have excellent principals at all of our screenings, and what they needed and required from us this year was fix some of the broken systems and give them the support. And I invite all of you in the areas that you are in to get to know your principals, come in, we have an open door policy, make yourself known, if you want to contribute, go see your principals, they are ready and willing to hear from you. Our families are our greatest assets. When we open our doors to our families, and when we involve our parents, and when we allow our children to have the opportunities that they need, we can do what we need to do. We have engaged in a fiscal recovery plan that involves reducing costs with minimal impact on the program. We have to attract our students back in Inglewood, but we have to earn that attraction back in Inglewood. And so we must make sure that we protect and we enhance our programs. We have conducted an all-area review of our budget, so that we look at every aspect of the budget, we look at costs to see whether they're valid costs, we looked at contracts to see whether they're being fulfilled, whether they need to be continued, whether they're serving our students. We want to make sure that our investments are in students and not in adults, so we're investing in mission priorities and investing in increasing enrollment. We only found, we needed only a portion of a $55 million loan. We've taken down $29 million to enable us to operate, and we will not take down any more of that $55 million loan. We do not want to be in debt. In fact, we're looking at the revenue side as well, too often these organizations in school districts, they say cut, 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 cut. That is what we have to do in some instances, in some areas, but you also have to build revenue. And if you look on the revenue side, then you can minimize the impact on your programs, and then you engage the partners that bring that revenue, and the kinds of practices that bring that revenue, we deserve fiscal help. You heard Mayor Butt talk about what we've been able to do in the city, we're going to do the same thing in Inglewood Unified School District. We just had our fiscal recovery plan approved by the LA County Office of Education, and I'm here to announce that we are going to be structurally solvent in 2015, 16. I'll give you one example of how this type of activity, this can come about. We took, we had a very close look into clean energy jobs, and by taking that kind of look, we found that we are able to reduce 1.8 million dollars of our expenditures, just in utilities costs. So this is the kind of approach we're taking to the finances, we've got a crackerjack team there, we honor every dollar that comes into the school district as a tax dollar, and we have to honor that, it's our dollar, and it should be going to our children. So we're going to remove the obstacles for that, and make sure that that money is flowing more to the campuses. A lot of the money was flowing into the district office, we're cutting down by about 50% the amount of money that was coming into the district, and returning that amount of money in federal funds directly to the school sites, so it can support children. Safety, safety was a priority. First act that Dr. Brandt made when he came in in July and in August was to restore campus supervisors to our school site, to make sure that there are adults on every school site, that to make sure children are safe. that, to make sure children are safe and that they are able to resolve problems and that the campuses are safe from intruders, et cetera. Uh, we found that if we were, we did a safety audit of the schools, we found there were some schools and it's one in District Four where actually people could walk in from the street and they could walk straight into the campus. And that was unacceptable. So that was brought to our attention by our principal. We visited all the principals to hear what they had to say. That was one of the first issues that Principal Worthington School brought up. And so we have installed a brand new glass entryway at Worthington School that is, has electronic lock on it and is able to be seen by the office so that that entryway is managed and no one can walk right into the school from the street anymore. Safety is our number one priority. We had also at Worthington School, we had a kindergarten playground area where the roofs were, were breaking up to the ground, kids could stumble. We actually had to close for interest of safety, uh, that kindergarten area as well. What's a kindergarten without a player? It's nothing that isn't a kindergarten. So we completely redid that kindergarten, we had an opening ceremony for it, we had the community in, we have brand new kindergarten facilities with donated kindergarten apparatus, murals and a safe playground and a safe area for our kindergarteners to be at Worthington School. Safety is our first priority. Uh, also, we talked about academic excellence. We are engaged in transitioning to the Common Core standards. Uh, in order to do that, it requires professional development. We are working with the Department of Education and the LA County Office of Education to develop a comprehensive professional development plan to move swiftly and move deliberately into the Common Core so that our students over the next three years transition effectively into these new international standards that have been developed by the governors of the United States of America. Uh, along with that comes a demand however, that, and many of you have heard, that students will now be assessed differently, that they're going to have to learn how to be assessed on computers and assessed electronically, but it was moving away from paper pencil assessments. Well, as you know, the different, the infrastructure here in Inglewood Unified School District is varied. You'll have one school that will have computer labs, you'll have another school that has nothing. One of our schools, uh, if you turn on all the computers at one time, the electricity shuts off. So we were, we faced some very, very big challenges just to get our schools ready to begin these assessments, which our district is going to now successfully get, we're piloting, they've begun piloting those. We make Chromebooks available for all the school sites so they can do them to testing successfully this month. And in our facilities planning, we're looking at building the infrastructure as we do renovations throughout the district for the twenty-first century needs. So, um, speaking of that, facilities, uh, Inglewood's, the city of Inglewood has done an amazing thing in passing the bond measure. And you need to give yourselves a round of applause because many school, clean cities have failed to test out the resources for the school districts and school districts are dependent on these kinds of funds. That is a lot of the hundred million dollars for renovations here in Inglewood School District and we are on board for those innovations. We've been conducting bi-monthly meetings with our, with architectural teams to plan out how that's going to be done so we get the maximum amount of money out of those dollars. So we're very strategic as to which schools are renovated, which schools are, uh, completely, uh, razed and then rebuilt and how we can consolidate facilities. And those plans are going forward and we're very excited about it because our goal is to have twenty-first century learning environments for every student here in the Inglewood Unified School District. We should be able to review to, uh, begin to share those particular plans and those initial plans with the community starting in the fall. So we're very excited about that and we're hoping to actually break ground on some of these projects, have them fully planned, approved, embedded and be able to break ground on those projects before the end of the next school year. Uh, finally, partnerships, that's one of our goals of partnerships. We are very proud to, uh, have a very strong relationship with Councilman Franklin and the mayor's office. Our intergovernmental partnerships are being renewed. We meet with the mayor and the city council on a regular basis. We also, as you know, and I may not know, Councilman Franklin has himself been out at some of our schools, uh, helping with beautification projects, uh, calling me up saying, why aren't you here? Uh, we have a couple of pots that need to be planted here and so I will be at the next one. Um, also, we are building, uh, relationships with our community. We send our invitations again to all of you. We have our school site council meetings, we have our district advisory council meetings, those are posted on our website. Please feel free to come. Also, we are engaged in what's called the LCAP, which is, uh, a process where we're coming up with a plan, a local accountability plan to spend the money, how the money is to be spent, if the governor is giving us for our school districts that are impacted socio-economically. And Inglewood is one of those school districts that has a high, uh, high level of English language learners, high level of foster children and high level of children who are socio-economically disadvantaged. So having said that, please check our website for our LCAP meetings. These are community meetings to get your input on how that money should be distributed to support children. In the interest of time, I want to highlight just a few things. Uh, we were engaged in partnership with our Chamber of Commerce. We had, uh, over seventy-five students participating in job shadowing. Remember, our goal was twenty-first century college and career readiness. We had an honorable breakfast recently at Morningside High School. Uh, and one of the families I met, the Malinalo family, and I was surrounded by families and students, standing room only, completely filling the auditorium at Morningside High School. So many honorable students that they had to have two assemblies to accommodate the entire school's honor. And, uh, when I met this particular student and asked her where she was going to college, she was going to, she had already been accepted at three colleges and standing room either was another Morningside alumni who was then at UCLA. And, uh, so I want to just say that many, many, many of our students have been successful. We haven't told that story well, so please, look at our website. We need to highlight the excellence and the accomplishment and achievement that we have here in Inglewood. We will continue to do that, to, to, to do that. So let's celebrate our students, we have many of them going on in university. If you check our website, we're spotlighting our seniors that are, that are moving forward. Uh, and then I'd like you to know about Parent University. Our, our, our teachers association sponsors Parent University, which allows parents to come in and get workshops on topics that they have selected. They're also standing room only, Benick Key has been, uh, a host for a number of those parent universities. Monroe Middle School, Monroe Megan has been one of the leaders in the Common Core professional learning communities. We have beautification campaigns happening, as I said, with the councilmen. Uh, we also have Sacramento trip coming up from Monroe Middle School so our students can learn how civic, uh, act, civic action takes place within our state. And I'd like you to know that Monroe has developed a band and we're now opening a band and arts program at Morningside High School. Why are we doing that? Because of our commitment to twentieth century college and career readiness. We have initiatives in place now as we look ahead. With Chevron, we have, uh, a pathways grant for some of you that are not familiar with that term. Pathways means that students start receiving, uh, instruction and opportunities, growth opportunities in kindergarten through, in kindergarten it goes all the way up through twelfth grade. We have a six hundred thousand dollar pathways grant that we're working on that we're waiting to get approved. We have a two million dollar technology grant for middle schools. Uh, we have an arts program with P S Arts that is coming and the Otis College of Art. Southern Day Work Force Investment Board is working with us to provide a college promise program where students who take certain classes throughout, uh, high school are promised entryway to the Cal State system and to the community college system. And finally, uh, we are working with local community as well for community health initiatives and we're proud to be a part of the initiative coming up next month and the end of the next month where Inglewood Unified School District has a walkathon on May thirtieth and health fair and thanking Centennial Hospital for joining us in that. And also the following weekend, the city of Inglewood has the Relay for Life, which is cancer prevention. So I hope you will all come out and join us for that. So I want to thank Councilman Franklin for this opportunity. Uh, we operate on the premise of thinking globally and acting locally. Please join us in our beautification efforts, our parent engagement opportunities and our local control funding meetings. Please check our website. Uh, my hero is a educator from South America called Paul Frey. And Paul Frey, he says, uh, ning se libera solzin, solse libere comienzo. And what that means is no one achieves success alone, we only achieve success as a community. So those who join together are this path of excellence. Please feel welcome to join us in this work and we hope to hear from all of you. Thank you.
But we also have a fighter, the one that has no problem of putting the gloves on and duking it out with the best. And more importantly, wins and brings money back here to our city from Washington DC. Please help me welcome our artist-in-law, U.S. Congresswoman Maxine Waters.
Good luck everyone. I just wanted to stop by. We've been on break in Washington DC for a couple of weeks and I've been traveling around through all of the cities in the district. But this is very important. This town hall meeting, Ralph Franklin, has shown the city of Inglewood how you can engage the citizens, how you can keep them informed and how you can involve them in the direction of the city. And that's very important to our democracy. So I want to convince him or his town hall meetings, he's become famous for his town hall. Now, he's an excellent leader and public policymaker. You heard the gentleman who just gave you the excellent education report, talking about how you volunteered. He has been doing this for years, whether it's with the Boy Scouts or whether it's stopping at a school and planting plants. This is a man that loves Inglewood and you can see him all over the place, not only in his district, he's everywhere and that's great. So ladies and gentlemen, I want to tell you, I believe that Inglewood is a real gem. It is a very special city. It is very special because I believe that we have in this city everything that a city needs to succeed. This is a great location, an absolutely central location in this overall county. And so we should cherish this city, do everything that we can to support it, get out and vote for those representatives who represent us well and make sure that your voice is heard. I work very closely with the elected officials here in Washington DC and we've been fighting for the C D B G funds. Those are the block grant funds that come to cities and the opposite side of the aisle have been trying to do away with C D B G funds with sequestration. That simply means cuts, cuts, cuts. It's so important that we get those kind of funds into the city. Let me just mention to you quickly, on education, you know, we have, uh, our arts program and we have competitions and for those artists who win, we bring them back to Washington DC and we display their work in the halls of Congress. So I do want the Inglewood schools to be involved in those competitions. The other thing I'd like to make you aware of, even though everyone's not interested, the military academies award grants of, and scholarships of about a hundred thousand dollars per year for education. And of course, like I said, everybody may not be interested, but this is a good education and for those people who aren't interested, these children come out as officers in the military. They're very, very expensive, uh, scholarships, they're wonderful scholarships for those who would like to do this and they're begging us to get people interested in it. And so we'd like to make sure we connect with the schools so we can get this information out. I thank you for allowing me to have a few words with you. Carry on, take care of this city, do everything that you can to make it strong and get behind our schools. Thank you very much.
Does District Four get attention or what, huh? Right right now and the mayor came through. So here we have local and federal to make sure that we get things taken care of. So it's a great honor to know that we're doing something because they wouldn't be here if we weren't doing anything. And so I think that's very critical, it's not Councilman Franklin, it's us. Because I may carry your water, but it's us because you've got my hat to make sure we get things done. And on that note, I also want to reach out to identify that we want to recognize those Inglewood residents, particularly in District Four, that said, I care about our community, I care about the environment and I want to reduce as much landfill items that go there as possible. Please help me recognize our public relations representative from the Republic Services, our wasteland of our new city, of our city, Ms. Dawn Harris.
Good afternoon, everyone. Quickly, I just want to express my appreciation to all of you for leading the city in recycling. As many of you know, because you're participating, we do offer the recycle rewards program for the city of Inglewood. And it's very simple, all we ask is that you call in or go to the website and just sign up. That's all you have to do. Once you sign up, but you're recycling out every week. And what we do as a company, we have divided the city into fifteen recycle zones and the area, the zone that has the most recycling by weight can win a prize, uh, at the end of the year. And this year, the winning zone was actually in District Four. Of five thousand dollars to District Four and it has been dedicated to the campus beautification program. Have a few words for you and I want to let you know that all you have to do is sign up and there's more information on what is recyclable, what isn't, and it's out at the front desk. If you have any questions, my number is here and I want to give you the number that you can call. So if you don't have computer access and you don't go online very often, all you need to do is call three ten four three six seven three four one and you'll have some ladies to put your order in.
And now, uh, Ms. Harris is here. I want you to identify that she identified that I had this money to spend for a community and beautification project. I could have reached out to you like we normally do, have painted the various city properties, beauty properties, such agency property, but I wanted something that would be long lasting, something that would have better appreciation for us and the community and that it would also go back to the children. That's why I'm going to identify the theme about this, well, spring of the, spring of action in District Four, that it had a actual bona fide meaning to it. I'm proud to announce that all this money has been appropriated to all five Inglewood Unified Schools in District Four. They've already started and they'll be doing some presentations before, but I want my team to come up, to identify just how we've been very successful on unifying the campus and then there'll be a couple of men to speak about as well. Principal Rose Rankout of the Clyde Woodwork Elementary School. Uh, Principal Marilla Smith, New Elementary School. We have District Principal Anna Garba from Worthington Elementary School. We have Brent Hall, Principal Monroe Middle School. We have Principal Anderson Price, Morningside High. Where's Brent?
He stepped out.
He stepped out. We're getting back in here, we appreciate that. And then also I think it's very fitting and it also gives you a chance to speak, that we made sure that the money was spent, was spent locally and we also received a discount. Please help me welcome Leon Harris of the Home Depot. I want to make sure, reach out to Autumn Burke, please come on down and help us because you wrote in your speed as well. So where do you like us? You okay? Donna, come on in. I said District Four. District Four, you know what I said? Where doggo walk? All right, we got everybody, we got the shortcut. Wait till he gets there. Now, we don't agree here with the ladies. All right, just be serious, please. And you're going to have to be there. All right, just received you quickly and then we're going to have you guys come right back up. We're trying to move as fast as we can. I want to go straight into the outreach align of public space. I don't know. I don't know. I want everyone to identify Autumn Burke, she happens to be the daughter of Autumn Burke, So here I am at Earth Day last Saturday at City Inglewood Downtown. And here we're learning about the saving of the environment and how we need to make sure that we don't put oils down the drain, do it goes to the ocean, et cetera. And Autumn happened to come and she says, "Well, I believe in giving back to the community. I want to be part of the community." I said, "Oh, you really?" So if you know anything about a scout, which is Boy Scouts, and you also know that I don't mind when my sleeves get dirty, well, it just so happened that in 1994, I started a Cub Scout unit at Benet Q Elementary School and it still goes on to this day. And then also we bridged over and I have a Boy Scout unit that I started and it's still going on since 95 since we started. Well, we have campus beautifications, we're going to see a few pictures in a little bit, but I want the principal, please come on up. Principal Perez said she wanted some extra help. So I mentioned to Ms. Burke, I said, "You know what? We're going to do beautification of this campus, wish you'd like to roll up your sleeves." And she said, "I don't mind getting dirty." And so she surprised me because she was with me side by side with the pigaxe and we were in the shovel and we was able to actually dig the soil and remove certain plants. And then we also actually put new plants and we'll let Ms. Perez talk about all the other stuff, but I thought you'd like to share with us some of your experiences.
No, it was, it was, it was a great opportunity for me to work not just alongside the councilmen, but with the kids and to see them participate in the beautification of their own school. So this was an honor and a privilege and I am very looking forward to the next time. I don't know that I'll pick a pigaxe the next time I may work in the shovel, but it was a great experience and I just look very pleased to have it. Thank you.
Let's give her a hand. So the home depot is very excellent, it's very prominent. I think you're very welcome, I appreciate it. Thank you. I think it's only very fitting that before we start showing you another PowerPoint presentation, and who did I say we got to give a thank you to on the PowerPoint? Gladette Matthews, the council assista, for helping to create this. I want to identify a couple of things. First of all, this is our campus beautification project in District 4 and the next slide says, "The following slides highlight some of the campus beautification projects that have been scheduled for District 4 schools." Again, District 4 public schools, and there you see all the five campuses where this money has been spent and soon it has been spent because I heard Mr. McCray said he will be joining us because there's two more campuses I have to do and he asked, "The Bengay and X is only lasts so long, I can get some more help." So identify, I just wanted to identify, thank you to all of everyone for our campus beautification and particularly our sponsors, particularly want to reach out to Republic Services for being able to provide us the funding for us to be able to make this happen, to help beautify our campuses. And so here's another shot identifying that, the next picture? No, it's picture five. So just identifying the Republic, thanking them for their services and particularly the public relations representative for municipal government, Ms. Dawn Harris, give her another hand of humiliation. Next slide, so Republic Services provides the community services grant that funds these projects. They also provide a transportation to purchase items to each school campus. So after they use their credit card, their credit card, then they also say, "Well, what day are you going to do the planting?" So in working and coordinating with the principal at that particular campus, they brought not long, but two of their trucks, a pickup truck, and loaded all of the plants and they helped share with you all the other items that they got in order to go on their campus. But we owe that to the next slide, please, to our local sponsors who also rolled up their sleeves and said, "Yes, I want to make a difference too." And so as a consequence, I want Leon Harris, please come up and be recognized and go to the next page of this video. Leon Harris is our manager at the Home Depot on Century Boulevard. Leon, would you come?
Hey, thank you for having me here today. My name is Leon Harris, I am the store manager here on 3363 Century Boulevard. I like to say I'm proud that I work for a company that not only believes in helping the community, but encourages us to do so. We also, and with the restoring and be having the community space here at Hollywood Park is a part of a big effort that we can create strong, stable community for families and businesses to thrive together. We have ordered more pest control products for the community. We also gave you some small animal cages like the young lady was speaking about earlier. We also want to be your one stop, one stop area so you can get all the things that you need. And we also have employment available for the community also. Okay? Go on home depot dot com, career, and then you can do my cell, call Leon Harris and I've got business cards to pass out for you. Thank you.
Now I'm going to strike right now because I may have to help them along. When we had the meeting in January and we had the announcement about the rope issue, I went straight to Leon and said, "I need to make sure you have supplies." Because we had the issue regarding supplies and make sure we had enough supplies there. Then we started dealing with going for food chain before I had to deal with, had to make sure we had the proper stuff to deal with them. And then we had the cats and now we have the possums, now we have the raccoons. We skyrocketed all we had to, the top of the food chain was coyotes. And I said, "I need to make sure that the community knows where they can go and get these items." So through Leon's, I've already been working with his staff and his district supervisor, they're now making sure that we have more than enough blood stuff available at our home, immediately available for you if you're available. Also, I wanted to acknowledge that Home Depot, seven Home Depot stores have been pre-identified to provide us with the construction material we're going to need for the Hollywood Park project. So they're going to provide us with all the materials. For the current project that we worked on, we worked in three campuses, I have calculus to prove, we have three campuses that we've already got the fresh flowers and the other supplies needed. His staff made sure that when I went in with the principal, and the principal did, they shocked to the rock. That he made sure that the day that we was getting ready to deliver the product, that it was fresh within three days from the time it arrived. So that way it was fresh product going right into the campus. The other thing that we did announce, that those principals, I'm going to provide you a copy of the receipt so you know how much you spent, that he also is providing you a one-year warranty on those plants. So if in fact there's an issue, then you'll have your receipt, you'll have the invoice with your name and et cetera, they can put it in the machine and they can be able to take care of it as well. So let's give him a hand together. On every purchase that we made, I should say Republic made, that every person made that they gave us a discount to allow us to get more product for that school and even have local vendors that was bringing plants and, "Well, I'm going to contribute too." So that's how it helped boost the campus beautification as well. So again, Leon, this is what the purpose is all about. Thank you very much. The next slide, please, so the Home Depot worked with each principal to select the appropriate plants, garden accessories and our supplies for each campus. Now, the first principal, I want to bring up the first principal who really taught me the true nature of labor and love. I went out there several days to prepare the soil. You can laugh at what you want, but I've been known to get the pigaxe from the trunk of my car and I was put to the test when we went to Clyde Woodwork. And so we worked diligently and I might get this time for a couple of minutes and Ms. Rose Rankow, please join me up here and make a few comments about the campus. Rankow, please give her a hand.
This is so exciting. Asadias, Hibiscus rosa sedensis, Trachylophus brusburgi, Jasmine pods, Avangeline. These are the names that were announced to our Woodrecruiters about three weeks ago and now Woodrecruit students, scholars actually, walk around the campus and see beautiful flowers. These plants were planted on a beautiful Saturday morning, much like today. The city of Inglewood provided their toolkit, it was humanist. Both holes were dug. Parents, Councilman Franklin, teachers, Boy Scouts, and everyone joined together to dig the holes to make sure they were covered with fertilizer. Plants were planted and watered. Now the afternoon, Woodrecruit scholars are happy to volunteer during the recess time to come in and take the trash out of the surrounding area and water the plants. Fourth and fifth graders have taken ownership and responsibility and are watering the plants three times a week. The kinders, they get the little bottles of water and they go out there to water the Hibiscus facing 104th Street. So thank you, benefactors of the city of Inglewood, for the beautiful plants, the hard work and labor you provided us, parents, teachers, Boy Scouts, and Woodrecruit scholars. But Councilman Franklin, thank you so much for your dedication, for your unselfish efforts and for doing your part to the community, but most to our Woodrecruit scholars.
So as you heard by Ms. Rankow's speaking, we'll go to the next page. You'll see that these are the Hibiscus that are put in her, in her campus. And that one is the flowers of Bigelow that's there. And then I want to give you, this is what, if you go on 104th Street, you'll see that this is what it looked like when we brought out a pigaxe and rolled our sleeves. And that's it, shows you that we've actually got the plants there. So it worked out very well for, the idea was that, what you just said, it was the students, teachers, parents, all of us said we want to make a difference. And they gravitated with such genuine sincerity that they now have pasture and a sign that we get to water each week. So again, congratulations. The next school that we rolled our sleeves on, I have to give the next slide, please, is Monroe Magnet School. Please help me welcome the short guy of our group, Principal Brent Sillie.
Good morning or good afternoon. I have the next one in, Brent Sillie, I'm the principal of Monroe Magnet Middle School. And I just want to start by saying publicly, thank you, Councilman Franklin, for all the support of Monroe over the years. I'm kind of jealous because that school is getting attention now because we've been doing this for about eight years now. We've never asked for any kind of publicity or thanks publicly, so I'm honored to be here this afternoon to share a little bit about some of the things we do at Monroe. First off, Monroe is a visual middle school. We have seven days wait there, as you can see some of our students out front here. We have about 484 students. We have magnet program, we have a core program, we also have a ELL program. One of the things we're really proud about at Monroe is our API school. For those who don't know, API is the way the state of California measures our public schools. It totally changed this year with the coming of COVID, but last year, our API was 752. Now that's significant because each year the state gives you a target number and there's a percentage behind it, I won't go into the calculus right now, but I believe ours last year was 10 points or so. Last year our API went up by 74 points. That was because of community partnership, because of hard work from our staff. Now that's significant because that was the highest API group in the entire South Bay. So that includes Inglewood, Hawthorne, Lenins, the D.C., so that's something we're really excited about. At Monroe, we really believe that it's important you focus on rigor, you have a rigorous curriculum, you also have a relevant curriculum. In other words, the kids see the importance of what it is they're doing in their day-to-day lives. And finally, you have positive adult relationships with the kids. And so we try to focus on those three Rs. And when we talk about relationships, we're also talking about relationships and partnerships with the overall community. And again, Ralph Franklin's really been, I guess, the bellwether and the model for that for us over the years. And his kids with Monroe, so he goes way, way back when comes the roots of Monroe. So last but not least, again, I just want to thank Councilman Franklin for all you've done over the years for us. I truly believe your environment really impacts your behavior and because of his help, we have an environment that our kids deserve. So thank you again.
Next one.
I'm sorry, next one, she comes with that as well, so I'm going to get him off of soon, so.
All right, pleasure. All right, just give you a little highlights on the next page, I'll show you, then he also has the Hibiscus rose that's put in there. But he went with the New Zealand, New Zealand flax that's in there. And I want to show you, as you enter the campus, this is what it looked like before. Next slide shows you, this is what it looks like after. And then around the side of that county purpose room is also some more planting that has been done. And then also, the next slide will show you that this is an area that's very clear and you just go right, walk past the administration with the main walkway. And then you go to the next slide, you'll see that there's new foliage along the wall and also we rolled up our sleeves, scratched the ground and there's downed seed there to be planted, that was planted and we're waiting for it to take off. So again, give Mr. Tully a hand in his... Although I didn't get all the slides for the completion, we do have some slides showing what she selected, but please help me welcome from Benet Q Elementary School, Principal Perez.
Thank you, it's such a pleasure being here with you today and thank you to all the team members, that's another council member, Franklin, to see our garden come true. But I'm the principal of Benet Q, I'm relocated. Let me tell you a little bit about Benet Q, we're a preschool through sixth grade school and we serve general population, typical scholars, as well as specialized education scholars from preschool through sixth grade. So we're very proud, I'm very proud of the community, I actually live here, but I try and now work in traffic every day coming and going because I love Inglewood because it's my new family and I love Benet Q. So we did more than planting a garden. What council member Franklin believes is in human potential, invest in the human potential. And he's done so for many decades and he continues to do that and he's very hands-on. So what the garden is doing is bringing up people's good emotions, encouragement and life, you know, making life prettier, encourage them to believe that they can have pride in their school, in their city, and read and write and things that we do at the school. So thank you very much. At Benet Q, we are the bears. And so I think of council member Franklin as a bear because a bear is strong and takes care of his family and is intelligent, is a provider, is fearless. And you don't mess with a bear. Because when a bear is up to something, bears have to be careful. And then you probably know that teddy bears, teddy bears are cuddly and hairy and loving. You just want to be with your teddy bear and it makes your life, you want to depend on your teddy bear because it's your love, right? So here is a little perspective of you.
What she did show you what happened on that, at the campus, because we really rolled our sleeves to help our students and the community that rolled their sleeves as well. The next page shows, she preferred the kala lilies that she has planted and the next one is the lavender plants. And then also with the lavender plants and the kala lilies, they're in the entryway of the campus, but she had a little twist to it. She actually has a water fountain, she has two park benches and white picket fence as you go around her fire bed. And then finally, the next page shows you that she actually has these geraniums that actually is on a stand as you enter into the administration office that says, "Welcome both English and Spanish." So outstanding recommendation that she wanted and we were just helping facilitate it. Again, Leon Harris, this game made sure it happened. All right, the next... All right, the next school we want to reach out to, actually is a school that we started off partway, we did phase one, which was inside, and now we're gonna do phase two. And so the assistant principal here is Emma Lovett of Worthendale Elementary School. We talked about plants, but in order to take care of plants, all the school principals selected garden hoses, they receive nozzles to, to keep the plants moist, some of them opted to get rakes, brooms, shuttles, and all that kind of stuff, they got mulch, and for those that are using it for their grass, they have organic potting soil that you use as well. So next page, this shows you the selection of what Worthen did want, which is the gardenia plants, which don't smell very nice. Again, the hibiscus plant, which is there, and then also, they're doing the star jasmine, which is gonna be there. They have evergreen acelia that they selected. And then they, they're one of the few schools that decided, "We want to also improve our administration area." So they have a variety of plants that is inside their administration as you walk in, and I've already got feedback as they, as somebody, parents walk past my house, and say, "Thank you, Councilman Franklin, but it's actually, thank you Republic, I was just a facilitator to make sure it happened." The next slide, again, for those that really mean that you want to help our community, you can help us with the labor of love. Many of us, we roll up our sleeves, and we are geared up to plant, there's a lot of area at Worthen that needs new grass. And so they have plenty of grass seed that will be coming this Thursday, May 1st, and that we need able-bodied individuals that's willing to roll up their sleeves and help us scratch the area, to put the mulch down, and the seed down, and the plants are gonna be delivered at 2:30. Plants will, will start in at 2 o'clock to give preparation of soil. If you're a government bench next Thursday, please join us, and do not wear any high heels or suits, because we plan to get mud and dirt, and we will not have mud fights, I assure you. We're certainly gonna use our labor of love, and every campus that I've gone to, they reach out to the children that go to that campus, because guess what? It's an investment, not only teach them responsibility, it also teaches them pride of possession, because they will all maintain that. Our, our final school that we're gonna be going as well, is Principal Sarris, we're inside Hopp, please come make a few comments.
Thank you, teddy bear. Councilman Franklin, really makes a difference at High School. Those pictures you saw on the screen of the different types of plants with the tags, those that come off, and he was on his knees with his cell phone coming down on the ground in suit, and on his knees taking those pictures, so he took care of our Home Depot. And we were picking out plants, I didn't even do the names of all the plants, I just, I just wanted to yell at him. He would actually take his names and those plants. So he's a big help to us, and before you get started on Hopp, you have to give him a morning sight. So Hopp High School, really, for me, the best-kept secret in Inglewood, which is actually not a good thing. A whole people need to know about what's going on in Inglewood. Drive down Manchester, Inglewood High School is right there, drive down to University of Hopp, it's one of the wonderful things that go on with Hopp High School. For those of you who have a hard time keeping a secret, this is where we teach. We, we can tell you all these things about Hopp High School, we need you to, just secure your guts, so everybody knows what's going on. We have a very strong academic program, we have STEM Magnet, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and we have approximately 60 students each grade level. And our Magnet program, almost every one of them goes on to college. We have a Core program, our students are none of the Magnet program, we also have ABIT, which is a program with chunks of students who have not, have passed history of being successful in school, but yet have potential to go to college, that's one of the big purposes we just implemented. We have an EL program for English learners, we have special needs program for those students, and we introduce technology throughout the campus. If you ever get a chance, come by, say you just want to visit the school, it's always open. We'll take you on a tour, whatever you like, we expect a nice, clean, safe campus every single moment of the day. We have highly qualified teachers and staff members, and of course, extra curriculum activities with athletics, and clubs, and student activities, proms coming up in a couple of weeks, it is getting exciting about that. So we're a full comprehensive high school, it's a complete comprehensive high school, and we've been successful in a lot of areas. We have, since we're STEM Magnet, we've won the district science fair eight years in a row. We've won the district math competition. We have a basic team that competes with schools all throughout Southern California, and we have several first-place prizes, even beating out Dallas Berties in our last competition. We have, we have, we have expectations, a high rigorous learning environment, we're college-going culture, we just had 81 students get accepted to Chico State Alum this year, we only have 244. Seemers, that's, that's one-third of our students that's going to accept our alums. And, you know, our, our expectation for our students, not only to be smart and educated, but good citizens. So we have, we've made ourselves outstanding students, even though they're a little lazy nowadays, we're trying to push them academically, but they're really good kids. We don't have problems with gangs, we don't have problems with students who run a gang. They come here and they learn Hopp sideways, and that's what they're expectations. I have 30 years in the Inglewood Unified School District, 33 years altogether in education, and that's the only thing, I love education, I'll be there until I retire. My hair was black when I started. I started the middle school, just started turning. Middle school grades, wanted to get you.
Campus two has, campus two has 10 minutes left.
It truly is now, and I believe the district will compare your, I have been at Hopp High School for the last five years. So by all means, let's create the word, come on, other people in the fourth district, but throughout this top of the day, adopt Hopp High School.
And so, we're gonna go to the next page. These are his selections, he's taken the Everblooming Gardenia, next one is Chinese Evergreen, he's going with Hawaiian tea, which is really dark red for the color of his school colors. He also has another red one called the crimson suncarisol. And then, remind you, he said, "Come to his campus, we'll be there Saturday." Next Saturday, 9 to 1, we want to, can we count on you, last one. So on behalf of District Four, neighbor to neighbor, friend to friend, resident to resident, we want to thank you for coming to this ceremony. We want to thank you for all the benefactors who came, and all the blocks of the campus that set us up, and I have one of my commissioners, please come pick up the survey, I promised you I was gonna give you, so it'll be taken outside. We're gonna have the survey, somebody go pick this up, please. Just go out to the surveys that we did earlier. One other, I gave a lot of information that was out there available, but the one item I wanted to update you on is the high free toilet efficiency, the high the toilet giveaway. Make a note, it is Saturday, May 31st, Saturday, May 31st, and that the number there that you call, identify that you are an Inglewood resident, you want to participate, you will be in the City of Lenox, but you are a waste, less basing user, you're entitled to a free toilet, and make sure you take advantage of that. Again, it's been my honor to serve you here in the MC. Did you get anything out of this?
Yes.